The time is four thirty P M Pelican Rapids Council meeting in fourteen May twenty twenty four is called the order by actuals in our council chambers if you have not signed in. Please sign the clipboard by the back door before you leave and ask everybody please put their cell phones on vibrate. Roll call of members Daniel.
Council member Steve Strand.
Here.
Council member Kevin Ballard. Council member Kurt Markraph is absent. Council member Steve Foster.
Yeah.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here, want to welcome everyone here in the city council chambers and also joining us by Zoom remember our city council meetings are seen on Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also on. Channel fourteen on Wednesday evening. Just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Wednesday, May fifteenth. At noon as tomorrow completes sweeps. A public meeting at the public library Sunday, May nineteen hydrant flushing. From seven A M to three P M. Monday, May twentieth, that is Minnesota Legislature adjourns for the. Year. On Monday, May twenty seventh Memorial Day, City Hall offices will be closed. Memorial service will be held at ten A M at Trinity Church this year. And then Tuesday, May twenty eight, four thirty P M is our next city council meeting here in the council chambers. Any other announcements? Any announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Oh, thank you. Citizens comment. Anyone here for citizens comments? Seeing none, well, item number three is additions deletions to the agenda. I have one deletion. Under the consent that you have the item number four G. Please delete item number four G. Any other additions or deletions?
I move to accept the agenda deleting. G under consent agenda.
Second motion, second discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Both the same motion carried. Item number four, which I will read. Item four A is approval of council minutes from April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Or B is approval of accounts payable listing four C, one is financial report, which is in the packet for C. Two is college chief report, which is in the packet. Four D is Pelican Rapids Chamber of Congress gambling permit, October twelfth, point twenty four, L W post five two five two. October tabs. Item four E is. Club on sale liquor license and Sunday on sale not a matter on behalf of Gilmore League post five two five two. Four F is malt liquor license to Luke Marzel prior to Paul and the Pelican Incorporated. Item four H is malt liquor license to Charles Evenson for prior to for Southbound Seastores. Our motion for.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion second discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same motion carried. Item number five is E E A update. We got one bullet point under their. Chamber of Congress lease to make it. There was something in your packet regarding that last is going to speak to that.
Yeah, so this is just from the chambers. They're terminating the lease agreement at historic city hall. So this is just our our notice and they're. Able to do that in the contract, so. Um, I think we'd probably need a motion just to approve it, I suppose.
Proceed the. Run all agreement meeting. Second. Motion second discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify probably saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same. Motion carried. Anything else there? Daniel, Brian.
I'm sure anything.
Um, well, they they were asking if we would accept. So so according to the agreement, they give us thirty days notice. Um, and so they gave us notice on the eighth. They said they'd be out on the eighteenth. And they're asking. If we'll prorate it for them.
So.
That's total that he wanted.
Yeah, so I guess what he was asking for was fifty dollars. Less total. Yeah. Yeah, cuz.
You looking for a motion?
I yes.
But I'm not with your. Motion second discussion.
Explain that. I mean. So they're being.
Yeah, they paid. Yeah, they paid rent monthly. Two fifty. A month. Yeah.
Any more discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say but we're saying aye.
Aye.
All the same motion carried. Thank you. Item number six is downtown trees and there was diagrams in our packet and. Talking about tree rate outputs and. I believe Lance is going to speak for this.
All right. So first things first, well, Kevin brought up last time that um. He thought that the council should have approved the trees downtown and you were correct. So the last time when Tom Pace was here. Uh, was been several months ago now when he would, when he brought this visual quality manual to us. Um, he laid it all out. And I went back and looked at the meeting. And he did say, okay, so you guys approved the basically the kind of trees, the kind of benches and all that kind of stuff. But not necessarily the trees downtown. And he stated then he would come back in a month or so and and present and have you guys approve the actual location of the trees. Well, that never happened. So what I put in the packet was the actual visual quality manual that he presented. And then the red Xs were the one, the trees that were actually taken out of the final plan. They just didn't fit. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to go in there, signs, streetlights, all these other things, water shut offs. So this is from the school here, that first one in the packet. The school is here. So all these trees are just in the boulevard like they were before. So those aren't such a big deal. Starting across from the fire hall is where the first tree grate is, right in front of. The gas station there. Um, and so the all these are in. So there's about what? Seven on this couple of blocks here. Next page. So this is actually in between the roundabouts here. So there's actually only eleven in between the roundabouts now. So those three that got Xed out there, they they were actually in the visual quality manual, but they got taken out of the final plans. And then. This is north of the roundabouts. So these this next block in front of the liquor store and then here those are all tree grates as well. Anything north of that is just in the boulevard. They're not tree grates.
What's the difference between the solid green circle and just the green circle?
I think it's the different types of trees. I believe.
Are you showing the tree grate? Downtown there.
What's that?
The circle, the hollow ones are showing.
Well, these are all, these are all hollow too. So I'm guessing it's just the different types of trees that they're putting in. But. And then there's smaller ones here.
What was it total number downtown?
There's eleven between the roundabouts right now in the plans. In the original visual quality manual, there was fourteen, but now it's down to eleven. So I think first things first, can discuss what you want for trees and. Can also kind of discuss. I know there's one. Business owner that does not want a tree in front of his business. Are we going to entertain those? Are we going to just? Do what the council wishes, or are we going to go to every business and ask, or is that going to open up a can of worms or what? What your wishes are?
Every store owner. Been pretty actually presented this and asking if they want it or?
Certainly haven't. I mean, it's been the beautification committee and every, I mean, everything has been opened and. But not like we've gone door to door and asked specifically everyone.
Business owners have looked at the. This. Beavication. The.
The business owner that said they did not want a tree, didn't know if there was going to be necessarily a tree or the business.
I had just been talking to him and I know I saw the plan, so I knew there was going to be one out there. So and I knew he was against the trees, but. But and that's the one, let's see, yeah. Here. So if you take that out, then there's only three on this side and there's a big gap here then in the trees as well. So I don't, I don't know what the. Best answer is.
I've got Pelican Drug is right in front of the door. You know, where they've got a place that.
Yeah, and these could move a little bit and during when they have the actual completely get it finalized and up the grade and where everything is too, but. I mean, a few feet here and there, but.
What's the timeline on this?
Well, they'd be starting to put, I mean, these ones in the first roundabout. They'd be starting in these tree grates in the next couple of weeks. They'd be putting tree grates in.
Right in front of Big John.
Both of these are.
True. Um. I don't have. Our billboard for our for our business is on the side of my truck, so he drives that around. But these guys have signs and stuff on there. On the front of their buildings, that's. The name of their business. They have the tree inside of it. But I don't know. I guess I'd be kind of questioning that too, but. I guess it's all up to the individual business owner because. I'm sure they all don't think alike and whoever has a business that doesn't want a tree. God wants it. We probably they sell the business five years from now and the other person will have the totally opposite.
I yeah, I do. Personally think they should. I mean, if they can be moved a little bit, it would be one thing, you know, but to pl- plow one right in front of. Door.
Yeah.
You know, they're the wide sidewalk, but. Also. Kind of on the fence because. I see a lot of maintenance, but I also see that there's nothing down there that you're just going to be in a concrete. I don't like what it was. Other than benches and maybe a plant for here and there, but.
So the tree committee picked up type of trees, correct? So what are we looking at? What about trees?
Uh, Tom kind of laid all that out. I've got some of them here. Where are they?
It wasn't, weren't they in the minutes from that?
Here's some of them here.
How tall are they?
There's a wide variety there. The ones out out kind of outside of downtown, they were that twenty thirty footers, but the ones inside. The roundabouts in downtown were only like fifteen feet, I believe. So we got a spring snow crab, apple, a shiloh splash river birch, red rocket maple. Honey locust, another maple. Kentucky coffee tree. Linden and another maple. So just kind of about three different types of maple and then some other ones.
So there's a whole bunch of varieties that are going to be.
Yeah.
Are the varieties going to be scattered or they?
Yeah, as part of their, I mean, that's that's. That's what these are, I think, is different varieties. So the smaller ones and larger.
They'll be similar downtown just. Side.
There's only a couple of them that can fit, can that can be downtown, right?
Oh, some of each other varieties are going to be along.
Yeah. Outskirts like up, yeah.
For the turkey plant at the school where they cut down those big trees, that will be the bigger trees, but.
Okay.
They looked at root systems downtown when they put them in so they didn't affect them. They didn't have great big root systems and sizes and shapes and. All of that.
Well, I got in trouble with one of the beauty members once. So I really not, I don't want trees on. One. I like trees, but I guess like I said, um. It it, you know, it should be almost up to the business owner where they want their. Their sign of their business block, but.
Right.
At the same time, if you open that, like you said, that. Well, I'm wondering on this side of the bit on the street and. A shrub in the bush on the other side of the.
There's, there's also businesses downtown that can't have a tree because there's other stuff there. Maybe that business owner wants a tree and can't have it. I don't, you know, I don't know.
You're not much help.
Well. I think, I mean. I said that before, there's, there's people out there who want fifty trees downtown and there's some that don't want any. This seems like a fairly decent compromise where there's only. Eleven down there right now. Um. And they are specific to the downtown where they're not going to get huge. They're not gonna. Shed too many leaves and make such a huge mesh mess. I don't think at least that's what they tell us, but. There's, there will be some maintenance to them and.
Believe they're guaranteed for two years and then they're for those approved.
Right. Yeah, and these won't get planted until the fall of twenty twenty five. So though that's kind of the the actual trees themselves are a separate contract. So the tree company comes in. When everything is done and they'll plant every one of them all the way one oh eight seven fifty nine, so.
So are we just kind of deciding where the grading is is going to go tonight?
Yeah, I'd like, like you said, if you want them or if you don't want them or.
Trees to be one.
I think it's so outside of the roundabout, outside of the tree grates, I think outside and the boulevards and things, there's really no questioning there. The the trees will go there, right? Everybody's for that. We don't really have to. Worry about that. It's just the actual.
The trees they cut up. We're just looking.
Just the tree grate areas, which is between the roundabouts and basically. Two blocks to the south and one block to the north, the roundabouts.
How big are the grades we're cut? Really look like. Yeah, all the four by fours. They're the great similar.
Um, I think there's a picture in here somewhere, I believe.
Would they?
Yeah.
The the grates are really only just downtown. They're not doing that.
No, they're just downtown.
Yeah.
Here's a picture.
They're all the liquor store.
But something similar here.
Why I just know. If they're in concrete downtown in the sidewalk outside, they'll be in the boulevards.
They both four by fours. Looks like something. Brian, what's your comment? He made me comment. He's on the phone.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't be on the phone.
Well, like Steve said, I know the beautification community spent a lot of time on trees and they wanted, they did want them downtown and that's their recommendation, I guess. So.
Yeah. I feel like it'll revenues a lot, but.
Well, you, as a council, you can have as many down there. I mean, if you want to cut others out. That's. Up to you guys as well.
Well, are they going to put these in in the next couple of weeks? The grates or?
Well, like I said, then so in this south roundabout, they're working there now. So these two grates over here. And then the ones. On the other side, while there aren't any on this first block, so it would just be those two like by Kreckelbergs and Pelican Drug, they'd be put in here in the next couple of weeks, probably next week. The, I mean, they'll hopefully start pouring some curb. This week yet, but. They'll be starting doing sidewalks and all that, so they would be.
Maybe put in those grades by like. Our goal.
Yeah, as they move that way they will, but right now they're.
They're just going to first tier, this first round of concrete and stuff, so. So these two right here would be put in the next couple of weeks, but.
I'm glad they decided to take the tree office on the bridge since there's no dirt underneath it. Sounds a good call. Well, this, this did come as a recommendation from the beautification.
Correct. Yeah, I know they they wanted trees downtown. I think in the very beginning, they had like twenty two or twenty five or three or something downtown. That was.
In a lot.
Too many.
This is a nice compromise from that honestly.
But when we say eleven, we have to designate the locations. In our.
Well, what's what's presented in the final, this is what's presented in the final plans for this. So this is what they're planning on doing. I mean, but. But they. They said even last meeting, they said if the council doesn't want any of them out, we can take them all out too if they want it, but. Or you could take, I mean, you can't add any in any different, any locations now because this is basically where the only places that they can fit, but you could take some out if you wanted or.
So now. The. Little tree that's in between the two, the in front of Envy Salon.
Right here.
Yeah. How is that going to work with the uh? Entrance to the new parking lot that's where the ref is building is.
So the actual entrance is just. Yeah, that that is right next to it. But that was. Let's see, I've got another. So.
Well, the entrance is actually over where that little passageway is over to the left.
The entrance will be just south of Envy, yeah, starting just south of Envy.
But that's still. That's.
They could possibly shift it a few feet as well. I don't know.
They may have to just do where her service goes in there.
Yeah.
Well, those are all going to go in later. It's the ones on the south end that they're going to be putting in, right?
These two that you'd have to figure out soon. Yeah.
So we're going to think about it. You know what? They need to know. Yeah, we have to think about it. But yet again, we're with the. Times of the essence.
Well, really technically, I mean, if they put in a couple of tree grates here and you decide not to have any trees down there, they fill them in with concrete. It's not like. So.
But I guess, I guess it's it's rough. We already know that we have one business owner that does not want a tree. Now you find yourself in the situation of. Making that business owner take one from the team and have a tree in front of their business or. Talking to the rest of the businesses and all of a sudden you're going to have. It will. More than line ridiculous now, because. The one guy won't want it, the next guy will want it. I'll take two, put a third one here. And then when they're lit up for Christmas, it's going to look a little. If they're lit up for Christmas, yeah. That's further down the road. I. Well, I know you can walk across the street down there and the other business guy will say, I'd like to have thirty trees downtown.
Yeah.
Since we're only talking about the south part of the street for right now, I'll make a motion that we approve this plan for the south part of the street and then we. Uh. Do some reconsideration for the north part.
South of the bridge and.
Yep, south of the bridge, south of the bridge. Second. Motion second. Discussion. I think more than two.
Just two years. For right now, yeah, though. There'll be actually. Seven total south of the roundabout, but there they won't be getting to those.
Yeah, that's not coming up right. I'm just talking about that south half of that main block here. From the river south.
These two right here.
Yep. That's bits in your. Realm of thinking or planning then?
That's fine. I'd like to know exactly what you guys want then to figure out. If you approve the ones to the north, then if we're going business to business or?
Well, I'm probably going to have to, yeah. But we didn't go.
Not necessarily. So asking basically as a whole, do they want trees downtown? We can't ask everyone, do you want one in front of yours place or not? It's as a whole, do you want trees downtown? Because some businesses, it's not possible to have a tree downtown.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I would. You could ask that question and show them that picture and ask if they are okay with this placement because this is the plan. And if it happens to be one in front of their business. That's. Luck of the draw basically. Yeah, but that's, I guess, that's where it gets. Yeah, you're. Me and the committees put in a lot of work.
Definitely, yeah.
And I don't want to go against what they've done there, so.
That's a written picture.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same. Motion carried. Anything else there?
Well, now on to the tree grate outlets, so that's going to will be pushed off as well, but. I will just update you. So. So the two grates that you just approved there, we kind of gave up on getting outlets in there because this crossing, the power crossing there is just. Just won't work. Um, they can't plow it in. They can't. Well, it needs to be five feet deep according to Min dot. And there's storm sewer in there at a little over two feet and then the water sewer and all that stuff. So it would have to be dug in and they they're not, Jason is not. Comfortable with doing that after it's all packed and good. So I think we're. These two are kind of out of the question right now. So we'd focus on just one meter, one feet point. If the council decides to put these tree grates in or these tree grates in, we could come as a feet point out of. If the council decides to put these tree grates in, or these tree grates in, we could come as a feet point out of Historic City Hall, come across and feed all the, all nine of these. And that price, just for the conduit alone would be about forty-five hundred dollars. So when I talked to an electrician, his price basically for all, all of these was like fifteen thousand for the wire, the outlets and everything, so it should, actually eliminating these couple still, I mean, fifteen thousand is probably a decent estimate for for right now. Having just these nine and not these two. Having these nine lit up and not these two, as I always said. I mean, there's options, you could do solar lights for these two, if just these two trees. I mean, we they haven't done, put any conduit in yet, if we go to the meeting tomorrow and there's a way that we could actually do it, if you guys wanted to prove trying to do it, we certainly could, if not, we can scratch it. Cause the, we have, we actually have the permit from MinDOT to do it, it's just that we have to get five feet deep here and it's just, that's the, that's the issue. If Jason actually comes up with an idea tomorrow at the meeting, it could be possible, but I wouldn't tell them, but.
So if we put the conduit in place, when would the wire have to be?
Like I said, the trees aren't gonna go in until the fall of twenty twenty-five, so the wires, they'll fill it, yeah. I mean, even when the trees are in, the wire doesn't necessarily have to be in, it's whenever the funds are available or whenever we can budget it for a couple of different years or.
Where will the money, where would the money come from?
For the actual conduit install. Um, right now, we have that the, uh, temporary easement to the easement money that we got from the state, that was about that thirty thousand dollars that we got for all of our properties in the project. It could come out of there.
I don't know if there was any inkling in our mind, we wanna do it, now would be the time.
We just can't do it in the future. Why?
Uh, what?
Put them down, sure.
Oh.
So, here's my, my reservation, and I'm not saying I'm holding against it or for it, but my reservations are, one, we're three weeks, four weeks into the project and we're already looking at the twenty-five thousand dollar add-on. Two, it's added, so how long does it take to put up Christmas lights? Now you guys have to put Christmas lights on every tree, are we gonna leave them on there all winter or all summer? Are they gonna stay up once they're up? Are you gonna replace the bulbs every year? We have guys that we're gonna be paying to do that.
I don't see that so much, I really think I see businesses taking care of these trees, wanting to promote that.
Um, so then you make it part of PDville, give it to those guys. And do we, but, I, you know.
And it just, you know, we have to do a few trees, it happens to be the end of the world.
Question was brought up about the electricity. We probably have to pay electricity regardless, so I'm not really worried about that, I just think it's if you can promise me, guarantee me, put it in writing, that if we go with this right now, there'll be no other add-ons for the rest of the project. Cause we're three, we're, we're a month in and we're talking a guesstimate of twenty-five to thirty.
It's sort of an add-on to the project, but it isn't, it isn't the project per se. This is an add for the buy.
Yeah, but it's really easy to spend other people's money. And it's taxpayer money.
Obviously, it's personally impossible because there's changes on the move that.
Well, I, I understand, that's why I said it better, because we're already, but I mean, we're a month, we're a month in.
Made it a long time.
Well, not really, because we've done, started talking about this last month, we were a week and a half into it. So I don't.
So we can do a battery on each. Right? Light it up for. No, I mean, these, oh, these new batteries.
I don't know. We have easement money that's been paid. But, but doesn't that easement money go to the property owner, not?
We're the company owner.
City, bro.
Right now, it's sitting in the project fund, so if it doesn't get used here, it would be used for any anything else in the projects.
Um, and what's the cost on the conduit? You other guys can convince me, or we have to give them money back? You know.
What's the cost of the conduit?
Conduit alone on just the north of the bridge, if you just did, north of the bridge would be about forty-five hundred if you wanted to do these two trees here, and if it is possible and it worked out, that would be about seventeen.
So the only place there would be Christmas lights on trees.
Be in front of the guy that didn't want it.
Just in between the roundboats is all we're talking, yeah, and possibly just north of the bridge to the round, north roundabout. It would be, I mean, with PDville growing and, uh, I think that'd be a nice addition. And they, they may help out with lighting those trees at some point.
Can convince me, hey. I don't want trees, so. I don't, how would you put it like?
Well, so north of the bridge, you haven't, you haven't decided if you want trees or not, so I guess I'm not looking for anything to to approve conduit or not, cause we don't know for sure, the trees are gonna be there. But you did approve these two here. So, of course, about seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars to do the conduit here.
You said that they might not be able to do that.
It might not be possible, but.
I don't think so, because that's about the same height as the storm sewer is right there.
Well, the storm sewers are only like a little over two feet deep, but, so we'd have to get under that and I don't know.
But the bottom is.
All right. Yeah, it it would be about, we needed to get about six feet deep, basically.
I guess I look at, we have the funds on hand, and we've spent money on other things, we shake our head afterwards and say, what are we spending money on? If we have the funds and the in the future, somebody will say, why didn't they plan ahead and do this? It was a pretty simple task at that time. But now or never, with the conduit.
And again, it's the trees, if you're not gonna put trees in, you don't need conduit.
Don't have to.
Well, I know, but they were talking about, do we this fairly sewer, were they not?
Well, this conduit on the, on the south side of the bridge would go in maybe yet this week, or should be this week.
But now there isn't any conduit in the south side. Right?
Well, we have it in the, we have a permit from MinDOT and we could do it, the problem is, is this crossing right here. So we're still not, I'm not positive that we can make it work.
But that's the only place there's gonna be conduit on the south side of the bridge.
Right, these two trees, yeah. So my thinking was, we, I mean, to simplify it and just have the one feet point, you'd have one meter, you could feed all these trees. And you said it would, it might look goofy, well, there's a big space in between trees across the bridge anyway, if, if they didn't get lit up, but two, two of those solar lights, solar Christmas lights here would probably solve that. And you'd still have nice, like, these nine would be lit up nice. You could do two solar lights on the south of the bridge. So if you tentatively think that's a good idea, there's no, no motions that need to be made because these two tree grates, you, you approve those. We're not doing any conduit there. And next council meeting or so, we can talk about these again, I can get more information from the businesses downtown, whether they want trees or not. Uh, if they don't, all these are taken out anyway, if they do, and you approve the layout here, then we can talk about the conduit on the north side, so. Is that where we're at?
You haven't even known all the downtown business owners or on the beautification committee?
I've got a list of the.
I was gonna say, I know for sure one. And actually.
Zeno was on there.
Her practice was down there at that point.
So the two businesses that were represented downtown, one closed and moved us, um, and the other isn't gonna open up his business again in the foreseeable future.
There's the list of the beautification committee right there.
Does say we're involved as part of the public involvement process.
Can you say that again, a little bit louder?
It does say this was part of a public, um, involvement process and community members both participated, so I would, I'm guessing they went and got some input, I felt they did as a message. Has the council seen this beautification plan before and its entirety?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom Pace Keeman presented it.
So you, you do not need any action from us?
I mean, if you're all right with no, yeah. That's where we're at, so. So basically, you approve these two tree grates for now. We won't have conduit to them. Um, we'll get more information from business owners on these trees, so next council meeting, we can talk about whether you want them or not, and then we can talk more about whether you want conduit in there. So we've got a little time on that side.
Okay with everybody? Anything else? Hey.
Nope.
Move on. Item seven, street department report, Ryan.
Perfect, thank you. Um, Brent, you did mention there in your announcement, but we will be doing hydro flushing this week. Says seventy-three, I have a feeling will be done fairly early, we're gonna do about, just about half of the hydrants, just because we're only feeding with one six inch line to the whole south of town, so um, we will put it out on, on social media that you will lose water pressure, um, pretty pretty confident that will happen, especially in the south, so just due to the lack of pressure we're getting. Um, we did start our, our summer hours here two weeks ago, just due to, it's been a nice spring and construction project and so we're working seven to four thirty and seven to eleven again, so. Um, street project is going well, they're actually, um, have sanitary sewer in, I'll set the manhole at Second Avenue Southeast today, so they're, they're moving to the south and they're trying to put some services into the businesses as they come, so it has been, you know, moving along. Um, the airport, that annual ultralight to the paracute, guys, they will be out here again this year, um, the weekend of July nineteenth. And so they will, they usually come out, the one guy sets up usually that Wednesdays, so I'm guessing they'll be there seventeenth or eighteenth and um, that's one of the things that, they, they love it out there, they, they can't have enough fun, so one of the things I'd like to look at for them is um, and for others, maybe, you know, maybe other people who wanna come out and do some flying too, but, um, getting some more power for them, um, for their campers and stuff, they right now, they're kind of run makeshift generators, they're running cords here and there, um, can't always run their air conditioning, cause there's the power in the one ten outlets, so, but we can discuss that at a later date.
You say that was in nineteen?
Yep, July, yep. Parks and the pool, pool's coming on, we had a meeting there this morning, they're putting in the sanitaries, uh, sewer now, so um, hopefully, I can, this weekend, we can open the bathrooms, we weren't able to last weekend because we didn't have water or sewer, so um, this, he says this week, a deal in the temporary water, if he has to, that sanitary will be in there, so that should be opening. Um, as you can tell, we cleaned out Historic City Hall and brought the tables to the library and brought showcases up here, so that building is, is empty, now it's upstairs today and it also looks like the chamber has moved some stuff out of up there, just so they're, they are working on it. Um, so the person that we had hired to mow earlier, uh, this spring, had decided not to take the job after, after some consideration, so um, with that, I need to hire somebody else, which, um, I went to the next application, so we could get somebody going, um, would, would like to hire Ian Spade. At a rate of the twenty dollars an hour, if that position is, that spelling is I A N F A H J E.
At what rate?
Twenty dollars an hour, yep.
That's the only other person you needed for.
That's the only one we need, other than lifeguards, um, at this point, we have four lifeguard applications, so we will, we'll be.
And we need how many?
Well, we need four per shift, so we'll, uh, we'll continue to work here, um, definitely once summer gets out or school gets out here, the next week, maybe some kids will be, oh, I can, I wanna do that. Try to arrange to get them all trained at the same time, so. That is, that is what we.
So all move, we hire Ian Bay? Bay or?
Bay.
Bay, okay. Motion second, discussion? Discussion, when do you start?
If he's approved. Um.
Story's started, right?
Yesterday, sorry. I had to, I, I'm, I'm way behind on that, but we didn't, needed it, but yeah, yesterday, yes, that is.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, single?
Aye.
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 All the same?
That is, I reported, we wanna talk about the monument.
Yeah, go ahead.
They, one, one of the members was supposed to be here, but something came up and they couldn't be, so the VFW has taken the plaque out of the monument down at one oh eight and fifty-nine, um, what they would like to do is put up a monument similar, but maybe not quite as big around the cannon in Veterans Park. Um, they have applied for grants, they have assured me there's no, no cost to the city, it's them putting this up through a grant that they're, they're hoping to get, so, um, they'll, they'll take the plaques that they took out of that one downtown and place in that other, so. So, I don't know if you wanna, Doc quoted to prove it. Questions?
What, why did they decide to move it?
They, I think they got a little bit scared with the, the, uh, project coming, that it would fall over, and they didn't wanna wreck the, the stone that were in there. They, they've got great footies in there, but the wall also leans and they're just, they got a little. They've, they've got great footings in there, but the wall also leans and they're just, they got a little gunshot. That they could just not have it there and not worry about it. Is what I understood, so.
Well, what's happening to the stones there?
They're gonna get rid of it. They'll tear it out when they come through the project, I believe.
I remember we allowed the VFW to, uh. Be reached, some type of monument down around the cannon in Veterans Park. Second hand, motion second. Uh, discussion, you're okay with the location?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody mentioned to me if we could put on the west end where the flags. Are, is there a room there? I haven't.
I would like to, but that's where the Oktoberfest. Back is in there, so we would have to. Take that one out, probably redo that whole thing if we did that. I, I would love that thing over there, but. So it's, it's. They said they just have to rebuild the whole thing because they could just set this one back in mass, so.
It's unfortunate that where it's gonna go, it's not gonna be a location that a lot of people walk by.
I hope, I hope they do.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, not there. I mean, where I was at.
Right.
Everybody walked by there.
Absolutely, yeah. But maybe, maybe with some advertising or some promoting, maybe we'll get more people down there. To come and look at it out of the way and. Hopefully.
Any more discussions? Eric, no, all in favor, signature, saying hi?
Hi.
All the same, motion very.
Perfect, any questions?
No, is there a motion or group, Ryan, report?
The moon.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion. Terry, no, all in favor, signature, saying hi?
Hi.
All the same, motion very.
Thank you.
Item number eight is twenty seventeen street mobility improvements pay request and packer, the pay request number ten. Buy into volume, it's part of the translates for thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Yeah, so this is the final pay request for that project back in twenty seventeen. Um, so we have just been waiting for the IC one thirty-four form that they haven't gotten back. It's a form that needs to be. Completed before we can give the final payment. Has to do with, uh. Making sure that they fulfill the requirements of the Minnesota withholding tax laws. So they finally got that signed and turned in, so now we can make that final payment for that. Twenty seventeen project to how?
Second, so in the second discussion. Was this money just spending in some places and I?
No, it's been in the. Account, the bank account. And that's, I have a separate fund just for this project.
Any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, saying by the same eye?
Uh.
All the same, motion very. Item number nine, city hall being room policy, that was in your package.
Alright, we talked about this last time. We wanted to make that little change just to make sure that. Hmm, no meetings would take place after city hall hours, so I highlighted that change in yellow there, so it just states that reservations will not be accepted. For times that fall outside of city hall business hours. All activities associated with the reservation must be scheduled and completed within city hall business hours, so it's. Pretty straightforward. So I'm just looking for the approval of the. Meeting room policy.
Oh, second, motion second, discussion.
There's been nothing so far, nothing besides city business that's been going on, so.
Any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, saying by the same eye?
Hi.
All the same, motion very. Item number ten, ordinance committee discussion.
So we have just been talking like we, after going through the ordinance and things, uh, there's. Many areas where it needs updating or changing or. So we're just looking. For any council members that are interested in being on a ordinance committee where we can start the process of going through and just updating and correcting some things and. Through the ordinances, so. I think it would be Danielle and I and Todd probably. Your city staff, and then we'd be looking for two. Council members.
Yes, I'd be willing to. How long will this go?
It would probably take actually a few years.
Just a job for you.
I mean, we'd take it at chunks at a time. I mean, we'd probably start with chapter nine is what I'd like to do, just to clear that one up and. So there's what, eleven, is there eleven chapters or something?
Yeah.
No, I mean.
Twice weekly.
Four hours at a time, yeah.
Anybody else want to volunteer? I don't know, you can talk to Kurt. Kurt's not here. So how long would you go each meeting day? And where would they be during the day? Anything else there?
And nothing says we have to have two, I mean, it's just Brent that. We could make it work and then, I mean, everything has to come to the council for approval anyway.
Guys will see it all and approve it all anyways, so.
So what if I wanted to go once in one?
I think we'll just probably break it off chunk by chunk, I, I mean. No.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven, library report for Schinderback, just an FYI. You have anything there? Nope. Anyone else comments? Again, questions? There's a. Please report in here. How many accidents have been happened on? The detours?
I was talking with Mike and he's had a. Like two that he's been responded to, but he said that it wasn't necessarily due to the detour or anything, it was this. They were accidents, I guess. Two, so two that I know of that were actually. Since the detour started anyway.
At the intersection?
I'm not exactly sure where. They were, but. But otherwise. We can have Todd. Next council meeting, kinda. Uh, explain more on that.
When you're coming from the old, uh, from the elevator and you come off the little green rain, there's a solid white line. Now, some people get on the right side, some people stay, so they don't cross, I mean. That's an issue, right? Cause you shouldn't cross, wait, no.
According to law, you're not supposed to, I believe. So you'd like to see a right turn lane there, or you would like to?
Well, I, I think it needs to be. I definitely. Is it, along the back of detour, is it possible? I'm sure Mindat. Got a stroke at the thought of it, but would it be possible to make? A four-way stop on the one, at the one oh eight intersection? Four ways. We brought up that and also one way fade church, but they won't put up a shop. I tried to give him a stroke and I haven't. Send me that, you know, more than once. Yeah, it gets packed up way back to. To the detour from that.
They're very hesitant on putting stop signs in where they haven't been before on, on the major highway like that, but. So they haven't gone for it.
No problem with that. Oh, I just. I'm driving that a lot, yeah. It's busy coming. Okay, item number twelve, administrator.
Since the last meeting, I worked with the clerk and mayor to set the council agenda and prep for the council meeting, attended a department head meeting, attended an E C meeting. Uh, went through the visual quality manual for the twenty-four, twenty-five project and updated the tree grate placement according to those final plans, attended a pool construction meeting. Revised and completed the city hall meeting room policy, met with Apex. Otter Tail Power, Max Extraction, Landwear Construction and Mindat on the possible installation of conduit for outlets in downtown tree grates as part of the construction project. Uh, attended the highway fifty-nine, one oh eight construction meetings and the open houses. Uh, worked with the PFA to get approval to use the whiff replacement funds for the final clarifier. Number four repairs. And then worked on revised drafts of the staff and supervisor performance evaluations. Any questions?
Full project on schedule?
And the, I asked them this morning on that, they're, they're on schedule, I mean. As far as July fourth, probably not, but mid-July is what they're still saying, but.
Mid-July.
Yeah. Well, that's always been the target. But realistically is, we're probably looking at mid-July. To be best case scenario.
So then, do we not? Do we start? Thinking about not necessarily opening? This year because so, well, yeah, but I mean, kids will start school. They'll start their practices and stuff, yeah. Mid-August, so if they're not gonna hold until mid-July.
Well, we've thought the one.
Kids will be going to college in August, so.
From the start, we've kind of thought, I mean, if they don't hit their target of, if it's not. Being able to open first part of July. We, we're thinking of, you know, just having a grand opening weekend, have it open a couple of days. At least in August or whenever, whenever it's possible, because they have to, it's gonna be filled up and it's gonna be ready no matter what this. Even, even if it's in September, they're gonna have everything ready, so make sure everything works and get the kinks out. So maybe that's an option where it's just. Or maybe that's the only way we're gonna do it, be able to do it, if they, if the construction goes long. We open it for a grand opening weekend for people to use it for a weekend and. And that might be it, I don't know, this season.
At what point do we?
Well, that, that point we could, we could talk with D L and Peram and Fergus even to have. Be able to get somebody for the weekend, I would certainly think.
So at what point do we make that decision?
Well, it's still, I mean.
Still hiring for.
Well.
Four people that are expecting a job. Yeah.
Yeah, even.
The community center, try like something to work up there till.
They offered that for other lifeguards, yeah, but. I mean, we're still gonna wanna continue to recruit lifeguards and. Um, even if we're, even if we know right now we're not gonna open, we still wanna keep recruiting for next year.
But as of now, these four applications they have are expecting to work in July.
None of them have taken the training.
We're preventing them from applying someplace else to get a job. Put them in that bind of. They should, they should be let know in the schedule, they may not have a job.
I know there's two that it doesn't make much difference whether it is or not. I can't, I'm not sure on the other two.
The other one, well, I know one of them has a full-time. Kind of day job. Um, she works for herself. Yeah. Most of them, it seems like they always have another job too, so they're always. Working around, but yeah.
Well, it is also a question mark on the construction, but Kelly did say that he was gonna get, he was gonna nail down a little more, more and try and get a firm. Date on when they'd be done, but. I mean, that's all. Contingent on other things as well, like the weather and everything else, but.
Any other questions? I don't know, the street, we went there by, between the church and home, what's the?
Oh, you're talking where they're digging in for the water and sewer for the pool now? Yeah, that'll go, I'll get done with the project, with the pool project. They'll patch that, yeah.
Okay, item number thirteen, mayor report, just a couple, three items, uh. First and eighth of May, I attended, uh. Complete street, uh, construction staff meeting, which are held here at city hall. Trailer of by the line construction trailer here. Sometimes due to weather and also trailer is pretty small for everything to capture into. Also on first and eighth, the many, uh, public meetings still. Are commencing at the library at noon, uh. Attendance is down, I think last week we had only three or four people from the public there. Plan is, if people keep coming, we'll have the meetings, but we may. Go from an hour to a half hour because an elders a lot of times. Take away from the contractor and there's really nobody there. And the people that have shown up at the end of almost every meeting, so they're up to par on what's going on. And also if, uh, it should happen, then if nobody comes, well, then they'll probably. Go back to having meetings once a month instead of, uh. That's the plan. Um, third of May attended a copper. Copper and lead meeting here at city hall with Brian Lance and Bob Sheenland. From Apex Engineering, also Chad Anderson for Mr. Public. Regarding the copper lead survey that city has to do, which every city in the state of Minnesota has to do to. Uh, serve the public with water. Does appear to find out where the lead. Lines are that, uh, need to be on inventory list for future use. Uh, then, uh, yesterday met here with administrator Royce, planned the agenda for this afternoon city council meeting. Any questions? Well, we have a few. We're still not quite sure. There's gonna be a survey sent out, a questionnaire sent out to the public. Hopefully the public will respond and relay them in the, in the basement. And, uh, there's tests. That they can do, you know, to see what type of service material they have coming into the house, whether it's lead, whether it's copper, whether it's. B B C or yellow, but I just fight and everyone in the, that's a water customer, you're receiving one of those. Uh, remember how soon lines.
They'll be sending them out soon, you're ma- possibly this week yet.
Okay, any other questions? Terry, no, won't you return? Oh, second? Second, all in favor, signature, saying hi?
Hi.
All the same.